Good evening, I'd like to call the order. The business meeting of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors, Thursday, October 10th, 2019. Would you all please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
General Counsel, would you please call the rule?
President Hines.
Here.
Vice President Winskill.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
Director Cobb.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item number four, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I move adoption.
Second. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, 4-0. Item number five, recognition of students, staff, students and community, 5.1, recognition of the Purchasing Department receiving the 2019 Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award.
Good evening, thank you for having me. The Institute for Public Procurement, or NIGP, is a national membership-based nonprofit organization providing support to professionals in the public sector procurement profession. With over 3,000 member agencies representing over 15,000 professionals across the country, they have awarded our purchasing department with an award for its 10th consecutive year. The NIGP program instituted this award in 1995, and the prestigious award is earned by those organizations that demonstrate excellence by obtaining a high score on a standardized criteria. The criteria are designed to measure innovation, professionalism, productivity, e-procurement, and leadership attributes of the procurement organization. Tacoma is only one of two organizations in Washington, and only one of 23 Institutes of Education in the United States and Canada to receive this award, and as I mentioned, the 10th year in a row. I do want to put on just a quick note that our purchasing director, Mr. Demel, will be retiring at the end of October. His contributions here in Tacoma and at the national level have earned him a National 2018 Distinguished Service Award, one of the National Procurement Institute's top-two awards. And under his leadership, Mr. Demel, the Tacoma School District has saved tens of millions of dollars that have been devoted back into classrooms, and has brought positive public attention to our organization as an effective steward of public funds. Just as a quick celebration, in addition to the celebration for the team, I would like to take a moment to thank Mr. Demel for his service. He has been the purchasing director for Tacoma School District for 13 and a half years, and while he has decided to retire at the end of this month, he's been an incredible asset to the district. He's great at hiring, he hires an amazing team, he's amazing at doing data, he knows how to set goals, he knows how to measure, he knows how to achieve, he's dedicated, invested, and focused on saving money for the district, he's ethical, and he knows how integrity is supposed to look, and every leader should follow his guide. Under his direction, his team has developed the second-largest purchasing program, purchasing card program in this state. We do over $20 million of P-card services. A P-card is important because it's actually cheaper for us to process a P-card transaction than it is to process through a regular check that the accounts payable would write. They've worked on implementing a cutting-edge electronic RFP process, request-for-proposal process, and they have automated and simplified any process that they have encountered as a team. All of this under his direction, with the 10 years of service, it's been an amazing ride. I am honored to work both with the team and to have the opportunity to serve with Mr. Dole. I don't know if anybody wants to add a few comments, or real quickly, if you'd like to add a few comments?
I'd like to introduce everybody?
Yeah, please.
Thank you very much. I gotta tell you, this is the second-best job I've ever had. I was once a helicopter search-and-rescue pilot in the Air Force, can't top that job. But, the teamwork that it took to do a successful rescue mission, we had that teamwork. So I'd like to introduce everybody, starting with Ian, our warehouse lead. He was part of that 12 million we saved this last year, over 2 million they saved us. Paula does contract administration and review, she's been looking at construction contracts all year, saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars. Mary Otto is our textbook coordinator. This math adoption this year was incredible, and Mary persevered through the whole thing. Sandy is our fixed asset coordinator. Over 48,000 assets that are barcoded, over 65,000 assets, it's amazing what goes into that every year. Sandy does a wonderful job. And Shelby is our stock buyer, and that stock program, under Shelby's guidance now, saves the district close to $2 million every year on products. Lori is our P-card monitor now, she's moved into that position, and she's doing a great job buying and working on these RFPs that are, again, saving us millions of dollars every year. And last but not least, Cherie is our lead buyer, and I think you had a few words to say?
Hello, thank you. As, I'm just the representative for the team, we put this together. Steve is not just a director, supervisor, and manager, but a true leader in the procurement industry. He has empowered us to be team players, innovators of process, and shown us to trust, grow, and flourish into purchasing team that we currently are, serving everyone around us. He has always challenged us, challenging us to think outside of the box, to never settle, and to provide the best customer service at all times with a smile. We are so grateful for his leadership in the district and department over these last 13 years. He will be greatly missed. We would like to wish Steve a happy birthday and a happy retirement.
Steve, would you and your team please come up so we can say thank you? about the way that Steve has conducted himself and run the department, and is, as sad as it is to be losing him, we're happy that you're going to be able to enjoy retirement, and I think we're all comforted that you've built a fantastic team. So you've done a great job of mentoring your team, and I know that the transition will be eased because you've put so much time and energy into helping that become a thriving department. So thank you, Steve, and congratulations, 10 years in a row on that award. And those are real, those are taxpayers' dollars, that we're being really good stewards in maximizing the effectiveness, so thank you all for that important work that you do. Anybody else have any comments?
I do.
Vice President Winskill.
I just want to say much again, thank you very much for the whole department and everything you've done, and I remember when you came, and, I mean, 10 years in a row is quite amazing, so I'm sorry it wasn't as exciting as helicopter rescue.
But I'm sure that the district thought you were rescuing them in many aspects of the job.
Superintendent Tontona.
I just wanted to echo our thanks, Steve, and I think it's worth recognizing, too, that whenever we had, you know, an issue that was for the whole district, it wasn't just about purchasing, Steve always came to the table, and it didn't matter what the topic was, and what we were going through, or what crisis we were looking at, Steve could come to the table and offer a perspective that made a difference. So thank you for being willing to do that, a willing participant and a problem solver. You've helped us in every facet of running Tacoma Public Schools, so thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number six on the agenda, Superintendent's Report, 6.1, Summer School Report, Title I.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. It's a pleasure to be here and to report on a very successful summer school that we had. So, I hope I get this right.
Okay, so our first slide, it, we kept it exactly the same format as the last time. You've got the x-axis and the y-axis, it gives you the statistics for the number of students that were participating. If you look to the left, you'll have them broken up by the levels, beginning with high school, middle school, and then elementary school, that's in the dark gray. Below them, you'll see first the programs that were offered, and below that will be the transition or the jumpstart. So kindergarten to first grade, incoming kindergarteners, 5th grade to 6th grade, and then incoming 9th graders, so 8th to 9th grade. If you look at our 2019 report, you will see that 23% of our students, 6,834 attended, out of a total of 28,974. The numbers are broken down to the number of students that participated. You can see that in programs, in high school, we had 1,160, whereas the jumpstart were 1,403. Can you give me the next slide? This is a slide that you loved last year, it just alphabetically lists all the programs that were offered. You can see how many offerings there were. We have ELL, we have special education, we have Rain City Rock Camp, which was a huge success, we had Camp Invention, which was a grant from Boeing, so there was a lot of different offerings. We didn't have as many as we had last year, a couple of them were not there for various reasons, but this was what was offered this summer. Again, if you go back and look at Jumpstart, and Jumpstart is that transition, we've got kindergarten, 5th to 6th, 8th to 9th, and you go down to the 2019 columns. Incoming are the number of students that are coming into kindergarten, so we've got 2,235, 1,375 attended, that's 62% of the students. It was 63% for 5th to 6th graders, and 66% for 8th to 9th graders. We are going to continue to keep that focus, make sure we invite people, let them know in advance, make all the kinds of communications possible to encourage people to come in and participate in the Jumpstart. Ingenuity, that's a very, very big part of our credit retrieval, it's really, really important for our high schoolers to have this. This is our final year of the use, we had a six-year contract, it'll finish in August of 2020. We had 720 students, 21 students participate. It is 486 courses were recaptured. So we have it broken down by the content area, and then we have it broken down by schools that use them on the other side. Just wanted to talk to you about Camp Discovery. This was the new name for Reading Camp, we wanted to make sure that it was an innovative, exciting, engaging place, and so we renamed it. It was project-based learning. Every grade level had a theme, 3rd grade was animals, 4th grade was transportation, and 5th grade was space. It had, students had to create Sways and PowerPoints, so we have some 650 PowerPoints and Sways with us right now. 484 students attended from day one to the end of camp, which was five weeks, but 700 registered. We had a pre and a post-test that we had created for this project, informational tech standards, 79% of the students that took the pre and the post-it maintained or showed growth. We partnered with the Boys and Girls Club, very powerful partnership, they had four facilities, students went there, and then they had access to daycare that was free after school. Because of cost reductions, we had smaller staff, the year before were 55 teachers, we had 45 teachers, even though we had more students this year, and there were less sites. The year before, we had 10 sites, this year we had nine. Thank you, Tony. Just a quick synopsis, our existing programs continue to grow, Jumpstart grew, Camp Discovery, Formal Reading Camp grew, our credit retrieval system grew. We are looking at other alternative sources of funding, as well as innovation and bringing creative things. Camp Invention was the Boeing grant, we had it at Stafford and Reed, 70 students attended. This, next year we have a grant for 150 students. Thank you to Kerry Sutton, who is my colleague and is sitting at the back, and he runs the summer camp, I just want, I forgot to mention that at the beginning of the presentation. We discontinued two programs, Explore, they didn't choose to continue it, and Tacoma Arts Questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Director Cobb.
You kind of alluded to it early in the presentation, but the decline in the number of students participating in programs, was that attributed to, like, you shared, there are fewer program options, but of the programs that we did option, the participation was still comparable for those, as we saw the year before? So it was just because of reduced number of programs overall?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Vice President Winskill.
So, my grandchildren did basketball, so that's one of the, one of the summer school programs that is really fun for a lot of students, it lasts for about a week, so, you know, getting the word out, I think there are quite a few in that, like, 70 students showed up to that program, so it was pretty popular. And so ingenuity is coming to an end, will we renew that or look for another product to use?
So Director Winskill, I think that's a conversation we will have with Doug Hostetter, the Level Directors, and Tony, and look at, you know, I'm sure I'm going to present data to them, that we'll look at that and see the amount of benefit it's provided our students, and then take a call on that.
Okay, thanks.
Director Leon.
Thanks, great presentation. So the, are we denying access to anybody who wants to go to any of these camps?
No.
Okay, so if people sign up, there's space made for them?
Right. Just a quick note, the Reading Camp, which is now called Camp Discovery, that was by invitation. So because it's funded by Title I and LAP, we look at the students who are below grade level, and try to give them that boost. So when we filled up 700 seats, we did stop, but there wasn't anybody on the waiting list.
Good.
Because we would have started filling them as people started dropping out.
Okay. So clarification, there are some programs on the list that have caps.
Okay.
Okay, so, for example, Rain City Rock Camp is a partnership, they, now, the fortunate news is they were looking for more students in certain areas, but you have certain situations, Summer Jobs 253 is a competitive process to get into that program, and so some of these are in partnership where there is limits and caps to that, and so a student may not be able to get into some of those opportunities.
And if they can't get into one of those, there's an option for them to go into something else?
There is options in, through online learning, some of the other programs, we also have, it's not part of this data, partnerships with other community providers, such as basketball camps, or tied-flat certification programs, and a variety of other pieces.
Okay. And your Jumpstart slide has the, you know, the percentages of kids that went, so 66% it looks like is what we're at for all the different levels, is that, is that good compared to other school districts, industry standard?
I cannot answer that, I haven't done a comparison.
How do we do, are we doing on that?
There's not a state-reported benchmark on that, there is not dedicated resources that are solely sponsored by the state for summer programming. So Tacoma, under the board's leadership, has made a significant investment. One of the challenges is, although we had the same budget capacity, our cost to produce programming went up, so that had a factor on that. So comparatively, some districts may have a similar Jumpstart program, but it's not something that's common amongst all districts.
Okay, and the percentage seems good, so.
It is, yeah.
And what is Rock Camp, rock climbing or rock and roll?
No, it's music and dance.
Okay.
Innovative, yeah. I have one more thing that I'm going to add. This time, for the first time, our students that went to Camp Discovery went on field trips. It was supported and sponsored by the leadership, our deputy superintendent paid for it, because we cannot from Title I and LAP dollars. We had 230 students go to the zoo, and they were so happy. About that many went to the LeMay Museum, and then we had Pacific Science Center bring in the, what's the word, Tony?
Planetarium.
The planetarium, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton.
Director Cobb.
This is more of a clarifying question slash comment about the funding, because I think we kind of gloss over some things sometimes, so I just want to make sure I understand how things work. The state funds 180-day school year, and that's it, except for Title I and LAP, where you can choose to use some of those funds for the summer. Even the fact that we choose to use some doesn't, we're not required to offer these summer programs, are we?
Nope.
So the complement of programs and options that we have really is a statement about priorities and giving students opportunities, because there really is zero basic ed dollars for this, and an option to spend Title I or LAP dollars in this way. Is that right?
That is accurate, and we use other categorical funding sources that are legally allow us to honor learning that happens in the summer. Comparison, we haven't found a program that serves as the percentage of kids in a mid-sized to large urban setting anywhere on the West Coast that is similar.
Thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, it's very exciting to see the growth of our summer school program, and I know when I first got on the board, it was mostly focused on credit retrieval, and the vision the board had was, let's create additional learning opportunities for students in the summertime, that can include credit retrieval, but really just the joy of learning in trying to combat summer learning loss, and expand kids who maybe have a curriculum that, or a schedule that doesn't allow them to take certain courses during the year, and so they can have that exposure during the summertime. And I think the Jumpstart, just anecdotally, as I talk with people, there's a, and I'd be interested, I think, when we're having our benchmark conversation in a couple of weeks, to talk about how we're tracking the students that participate in Jumpstart and the students that don't, because anecdotally, when I talk to families that participate in Jumpstart, the transitions are so much smoother, the students are so much more confident, and I think a companion piece to that is our 5th grade band and orchestra program, because I've heard similarly, parents say, well, my student, as a 5th grader, was going to zero-period band or orchestra, and so when they then went as a middle school student, they were feeling that connection, and I think we see the same thing for incoming kindergarteners and incoming high school freshmen. So I'm excited to see this program continue, and thank you for your leadership, appreciate the report tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation, your civil input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, follow these steps. Complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium, submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You may have up to three minutes to share your comments, or if there are a large number of speakers, time may be limited at the president's discretion. How many speakers do we have this evening?
We have five.
We have five, so you each will be allotted the full three minutes. Superintendent, the first speaker?
First speaker is Dolores Fitch, who will be followed by Melanie Summerfield.
Good evening, I am the grandmother of a 4th grade student at Stafford Elementary School. I have observed firsthand that the current population of this class is much too high. It's 31, the union contract says it should be 28. There are four 4th grade classrooms, only three are being utilized. Another teacher is needed to help alleviate the crowding in the class. The classrooms are so overcrowded, there are no clear aisles, there are no desks, there were only two desks in the classroom, they were flat-topped round tables and long tables. The books and the papers that the children had were all over the top of the desks and all over the floors. When they had to do a task, there was no room, some of the children would do sideways like this, so they could write, their chairs were banging together. There were too many levels, I saw some 2nd grade readers and some 4th grade reading material with the classes. I don't know how a 4th grade teacher can teach 2nd grade and 4th grade at the same time. The behaviors were not that good, the teacher couldn't contain 31 students effectively when she tried to take them to the recess, she's down the hall and they're still filing out of the classrooms, because 31 children is a long line. The transition from one task to another was terribly chaotic. She has two rugs for them to sit on, and they have rug time where they do computer, big-screen TV computer thing, the children cannot fit on the rugs. My grandson came home and told me, Grandma, I got in trouble, there was no room on the rug for me today, and he was very upset. And I saw a kid sitting there, leaning over with his foot and putting it on the rug so he could be counted as sitting on the rug for the class. When there was no talking in the room, because she would ask for it quiet, the volume of the other two teachers coming from the room, because they also have 30 and 31 children, could be heard booming in this classroom, because of all the children they have. It was just utter chaos. There was no personal space, my grandson brings his backpack home, and it is very heavy. He said he has to because he can't put his stuff on the desk. They have little magazine things that they put, I don't know if it's, everybody gets one, or is this some people get them? They're turned over, when I walked in the class, I did the splits on paper. Tipped-over boxes on the floors, no access to the doors, the chairs were all, when she asked them to go to the rug, they tried to hurry so they can get a place, so the chairs are all construed everywhere. The volume...
All right, thank you ma'am, your time has expired.
Okay, let me just say that the school's remedy for this is to hire one para for 92 children, but having another teacher teach in that classroom would be much more agreeable and less costly than if we would have to go to court.
All right, thank you for your comments. Superintendent, would you please look into those issues that were raised?
Yes.
And let us know in the Friday report. Thank you.
Melanie Summerfield, followed by Priscilla Jeffries.
Hello, my name is Melanie Summerfield, excuse me, I have a pretty bad cold. I'm a teacher at Fern Hill, I teach peer inclusion, special education, preschool, and I'm here speaking on behalf of all of my peer inclusion preschool colleagues. Let's see, so I feel compelled to share the realities of my job right now. I teach in a classroom where we have eight children with IEPs, seven children who are typically developing, so, under our new contractual language, that means that we are teaching self-contained classrooms. These are children that are supposed to be receiving services, especially designed instruction, and they have IEPs, which is a legally binding document. So, in my morning class, I currently have one student with cerebral palsy, she uses a wheelchair and a gait trainer, I have one student with cranial palsy seven, so she has mobility issues, stomach and constipation issues, I have three students on the autism spectrum, four students who are non-verbal, and five students who are not toilet changed and are in need of diapering. Okay, I have other issues in my afternoon class, but I'm going to focus on this one. Currently, it's just me and a para. Okay, I have no time to address my IEP students, no time to conduct any one-to-one assessments in order to fulfill my TS Gold assessment obligations, and every time, either my para or I have to be with a student to help them with an emotional issue, a toileting issue, a mobility issue, it leaves the other one with 14 other students who have serious... It leaves the other one with 14 other students who have serious concerns and issues and need help. So, that being said, per our new contractual language, RP, peer inclusion classrooms that include eight IEP students and seven typically developing students defines us as a self-contained classroom. And it says, it states, and I'm going to quote here, that self-contained classrooms with students with intensive cognitive and physical needs will have at least two para educators in their classrooms. Additional support may be added to address program and student-specific needs such as mobility issues, feeding tubes, extreme, oh, these are my words. I'm giving you examples, extreme behavioral challenges. We have a lot of children with social-emotional needs. I desperately need extra help. I had to fill out paperwork and justify why that was necessary. I was granted a part-time morning sub. It's been posted for two weeks and nobody's picked up the job because nobody can work half-time. So, I just want to let you know that parents are noticing and have said things to us like, you need more help in here. You should have more help. Accompanied nurses and such are noticing. So this is a safety issue.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate.
This is a compliance issue and it is a liability issue. So I appreciate your time and listening to me.
Thank you for sharing. We appreciate it.
Priscilla Jeffries, followed by Tina Taylor.
Hi there. I've been a Montessori assistant at Bryant Montessori for 16 or 17 years now. I'd like to talk about equity for a minute. How is it that we have two Montessori schools? Bryant, the original, pre-kindergarten through eighth grade, and Geiger, which goes through fifth grade. Geiger was able to keep all of their para educators, their Montessori assistants. Bryant lost five. That means that we are no longer able to run our Montessori lower elementary program where first through third graders are working together in classrooms with a teacher giving individual, small group, or whole-class instruction, while the Montessori assistant does overview, assists students during independent work cycles, prepares materials for the Montessori classroom, and informs the teacher when students are needing additional lessons or support. How is that equitable? That Geiger gets to keep their lower elementary Montessori program? I'd also like to talk about academic excellence. I've taken countless classes and trainings over the years. I'm a highly qualified Montessori assistant. Yet my current schedule as a six-hour para has me working cafeteria and recess duty since our hourlies are no longer working. All told, I'm assisting students with their learning approximately three and a quarter hours in my six-hour day. My six-hour workday, about three and a quarter hours with student contact. How is that supporting academic excellence? I don't get it. Last June, we received an email from Superintendent Santorino in support of Montessori. I was really hopeful, but now not so much. I feel like our Montessori program is crumbling away and it's breaking my heart. I've been there a long time. I hope that doesn't happen. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Tina Taylor, followed by, followed by Tim, looks like Tim Panzer, MD.
Hi, I'm Tina Taylor. I teach fourth and fifth grade at Bryant Montessori. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a voter. I'm a campaigner for candidates I believe in. And today, I'm also a TEA rep. I'm the Stadium Zone rep. Which means I represent all of the elementary schools that feed into the Stadium High School. Today, I am talking on behalf of Tacoma Education Association as their official spokesperson. And we are fully in support of the district's new plan to study later start times for middle school and high school. I was really impressed with the Tacoma Sleepyheads and their campaign that they've been running. The research they've been doing is spot-on. I was really pleased to see that Director Leon came to our Tacoma Education Association meeting to talk to our exec board and have a dialogue back and forth about this issue that is so important to our students. The data on this has been out for a long time, right? Brain research, graduation rates are all tied in a positive way to letting our middle schoolers and high schoolers start school later. So I'm really pleased to see a step in the positive direction, a smart step, a step that's long overdue for looking at what's best for every student every day, especially this time, our middle schoolers and high schoolers. So congratulations on a great decision.
Tim Panzer, MD.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the board. My name is Dr. Tim Panzer. I am, I live in Tacoma and I'm here with concerns as a community member, as a physician and a parent of students in the Tacoma Public Schools, urging the school board on the same topic to move school start times later for middle school and high school students. This change is supported by a huge number of scientific and medical institutions who have been aware of the data that's been building over the last couple of decades. And those institutions include the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the American Medical Association, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Psychological Association, and the American Academy of Sleep Medicine, to name just a few. Why? There's a convincing body of evidence now showing that older students, starting at about age 10 to 12 years of age, experience a natural shift in their circadian rhythm or their inner-body clock that leads to naturally falling asleep later at night and needing to stay asleep until later in the morning the next day. Disrupting this natural sleep cycle reduces the quality and quantity of their sleep with negative effects on academic performance, mood and mental health, school attendance, and even driving safety, where sleep deprivation can lead to deaths. I've practiced as a family physician here in Tacoma and Pierce County for 20 years. And I'm a clinical instructor in the Department of Family Medicine at the University of Washington. My work includes caring for children and adolescents, particularly from economically disadvantaged backgrounds. Having reviewed the evidence, I'm convinced that moving middle school and high school start times to 8:30 a.m. or later will benefit all students in these schools, but particularly those with educational and economic disparities. Making this change is in alignment with so many of the school district's goals to reduce disparities in education, increase graduation rates, improve academic performance. In addition, it would contribute to improved physical and mental health for our young people. There is solid evidence that chronic sleep deprivation increases the risk of obesity as well as future health problems like diabetes. My daughter graduated last year from Stadium High School and my son is a senior there this year. I've watched as they have struggled in their high school years to get adequate sleep and meet the demands of school and extracurricular activities. My son plays the saxophone in the stadium jazz band, but this commitment has required him to be at school at 6:30 a.m. for the last four years. Students really shouldn't have to sacrifice their health to stay engaged with their learning and with their artistic pursuits. The changes I'm urging you to consider will come too late for my kids to benefit, but it's the right thing to do and it will benefit all the generations of students who will follow them. I'm sure that a change in start times will require logistical and scheduling changes that will be inconvenient, but I hope you will take it under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And that concludes public comment for this evening. We'll move on to agenda item number eight, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments?
One question.
Director Leon.
One question I had about item 8.7A, sorry, 8.8A. There was an item in there about a, so love, wonderful to see that there's a psychologist being hired on and a McKinney-Vento employee coming. And there's just a question around their site of work, tone, and so the public can know where that is and how that helps the McKinney-Vento kids.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll speak to the FTE Dedicated to School Psychologists, which district-wide is 33.6. The recommendation this evening is a .4 personnel recommendation for school psychologists cab-deployed, meaning they would be deployed from the district office to serve in a location that would be beneficial or as the need arises, so to serve in our schools. And the Tone Center is designed to support our McKinney-Vento and foster care students for the district. And that would be a teacher on special assignment recommendation to help facilitate and organize in that location.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four-zero. Item number nine, policy matters. There are none under consideration this evening. Item number 10, quarterly financial update. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomaschools.org. About finance. There is no quarterly update this evening. Item number 11, curriculum and instruction. 11.1, approval of Head Start non-federal share waiver.
Get me, my agenda just cut out on me, so. One more click. The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends the Board of Directors approve the district's request for a waiver of Head Start non-federal share requirements for the period of 7/1/2019 through 10/31/2019.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Director Leon.
Part of the grant language states that a quarter, 25% of the grant is going to be paid through parent-volunteer hours. And it looks like that's been happening. Is that a hard thing to get done? Is it difficult? Do we have any problems with getting the parent-volunteer hours in there?
This would be a unique situation just because of the timing of the grant that was awarded and school wasn't in session. And so what we're asking for is with your permission to authorize the request for a waiver, since the grant was, as you might remember, there was some changes last year in the way the grant was allocated and the process. And so we got late notification. And so during that period of block, there were no students in session. There were no family opportunities. And so we've been encouraged to submit this request. And then in the future years, we would have the upcoming years to prepare to get that engagement during that same time period.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four-zero. Item number 12, business matters. 12.1, approval of the Maxim Healthcare Services Incorporated contract. Addendum number three.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Support Services recommends that the Board of Directors approves Amendment Three for the Maxim Healthcare Services.
Move approval.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Director Leon.
A question about what type of practitioners or providers this covers. Is it physical therapists or nurses? Just wondering about the care.
This addendum tries to accomplish four specific things. One, it increases our capacity for some of the overrun we had in 2018, 2019. And that is for one-to-one care for students, some coverage for staff appearances, and hard-to-fill positions that are deemed difficult to fill by HR and our union contracts. So we have some flexibility to work in contractual services. It increases our capacity to, and gives us some room when those situations happened in 1920. And it creates a new job category for behavioral aid. So it gives us some flexibility to bring some additional expertise in there. And so the adjustment of the total contract reflects these three changes. So it's both for one-to-one services for students. It is sometimes coverage in those hard-to-fill positions that we have a whole set of category that has been deemed. And then it allows us to access this agency for substitutes as well.
Thank you.
Vice President Wenzel.
So my question surrounds some of the specialists that we might hire that maybe would be better hired within. Because we're paying sort of a premium to Maxim. So if there is any category that where we could hire the people ourselves and not have to rely on it, I would like to know that. And, you know, certainly the one-on-one, the substitute, but the other ones I'd like to know about, so. Know what they're replacing, Debbie, or? Yeah, so like if you had a nurse, if you had a nurse and we were actually going to employ them all year long and we're paying them a contract fee, which is more expensive than if we hired them ourselves. So that's what I want to know. Okay, thank you.
And typically, it's not for those. It's more of specialty programs and special trainings and then coverages for that, in that example. So we can look in that, actually, the team's doing an analysis right now on our services. What is it that the state is funding, comparable opportunities? And so we'll weave that into looking at and seeing, are there any other areas where it makes more sense to have a full-time employee versus contracting it out?
Okay, thanks.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four-zero. Item number 13, other business. 13.1, approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to the contract with Abshire Construction Company for Hunt Middle School.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the GMP amendment which states the guaranteed maximum price on the Hunt Middle School project. Phase one, authorize a superintendent or designated to sign said GMP amendment in the amount of $34,153,587 excluding sales tax. Funding source, capital projects bond, as approved by voters on February 12, 2013.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four-zero. Item 13.2, approval of school board candidates to interview for appointment to vacant position number five.
The General Counsel recommends that the Board of Directors select candidates to be interviewed in the open public meeting on Thursday, October 17, 2019, from 4 o'clock to 6 o'clock P.M. at the Central Administration Building.
And I will remind us in the audience that Director Vial passed away in July. We came, our first business meeting after her passing was August 22. And at that board meeting, we officially vacated her position. On September 4, we opened the application process for people interested in being considered for appointment. The application process closed on September 24. You can look, well, a couple of different ways. Link through tonight's board agenda will take you to the 15 candidates that applied. They have also been up on our website. And if you click on their name, the link, hyperlinks to the materials that they submitted, so you can see qualifications. All of the personal information has been redacted. The board met last Thursday, October 3, in executive session to review qualifications. Tonight, we will consider which of the 15 candidates we'd like to interview. And then those interviews will be conducted next Thursday, October 10, beginning at 4 o'clock. The interviews will be televised, they'll be recorded for later viewing. So they won't be televised live, but they'll be recorded so that the public has access to each interview. And then the plan is to come back on October 23. The board will conduct a final executive session to discuss the qualifications of those that were interviewed. And then on October 24, we will take a vote to appoint a candidate to fill the vacant position. That candidate will then be sworn in on November 7. Any questions or comments on the process to date? Hearing none, I will consider nominations for candidates to be interviewed. Director Cobb.
I move that we interview Ms. Elizabeth Bondbright.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Are there any additional nominations? Director Leon.
I would like to nominate Ms. Desiree Wilkins Finch.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any additional nominations?
Yes, I'd like to.
Vice President Wenzel.
I'd like to nominate Justin Raphael.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any additional candidates? Director Cobb.
I'd like to nominate Allison Calalau. And if I've said your last name wrong, I apologize.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any additional candidates for nomination? Are there any?
Are there any additional candidates for nomination? Vice President Wenskill.
I'd like to nominate Adrian Stewart.
I would second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any additional candidates? Hearing none, we have five candidates to be interviewed. Superintendent, will you please coordinate for those five to understand when they need to be here next Thursday and any other pertinent information?
I will do that.
Right, thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 14, report to the board. 14.1, strategic benchmark monitoring report, early learning, third grade.
So we're going to bring up the team. And we just remind folks that these are monitoring reports and tonight's focus is on our priority benchmarks around the SBA data. Many folks, the public already have this data because it's on the public websites. But we will be talking to you about some lessons learned and some of the trends that we are seeing tonight. Tonight, we have assistant superintendent Ms. Toni Pace, joined by Dr. Hannah Benrow from curriculum instruction.
Good evening, President Hines, Vice President Wenskill, and members of the board. As you know, I'm joined here with Dr. Hannah Benrow, who's going to assist me in this presentation in the absence of Assistant Superintendent Marie Verhar. Tonight, we will be presenting our annual report on a priority benchmark for the early learning strategic plan goal. I'll do this myself. Of third grade students scoring at each level of the English Language Arts and Mathematics Smarter Balanced Assessment. This graph shows two years of assessment data for English Language Arts comparing 2018 to 2019. For this past school year, approximately 52% of the students in third grade met standard in English Language Arts as compared to the district benchmark goal of 59%. As a reminder, ELA, Smarter Balanced, assesses reading, writing, research, and listening standards. Between 2018 and 2019, students who met standard increased by 3.3%. Overall, Tacoma students have increased 8.7% from 2015 as compared to the state's increase of 3.7%. Most student groups show improvement from 2018 to 2019 with the exception of Native American, Pacific Islander, and ELL student groups. One student group to highlight is the 4.4% increase from 2018 to 2019 in students meeting standard who receive special education services. In the fifth year of the Smarter Balanced Assessment, math scores increased 6% from 2018 to 2019. Tacoma students in grade three increased 4.5% as compared to the state's 0.4% growth. Overall, 52.7% of students in third grade are meeting standard compared to the 2018 district goal of 63%. All student groups show improvement from 2018 with the exception of the Native American student group. Again, a student group to highlight is our special education student group, where we see a 10.3% increase in the percentage of students meeting standard. Regarding our key findings, I think we've already covered those in the past slides, so we'll move on. To next steps. This fall, newly adopted curriculum has been rolled out for K-2 phonics and supplemental reading and writing units in grades K-5. Along with the new curriculum resources, we have provided curriculum maps to guide the implementation. Professional development has been provided for educators in August and continued in September and October on the curriculum resources. Part of the district professional development hours will be reserved for teachers to unpack the resources, standards, and curriculum maps throughout the school year. We continue to identify and analyze the effectiveness of various formative assessments to monitor student growth throughout the year, since CBA provides a summative or year-end view. In addition, we are now in our second year of the continuous achievement process, or better known as CAP, for both English Language Arts and Mathematics. Schools staff develop goals and action steps quarterly based on data to provide targeted support for students not yet meeting math and English Language Arts standards. And again, for our key findings, we've pretty much covered that in our previous slides. We'll move on. For our next steps in third grade math, this fall, we have rolled out the newly adopted kindergarten through high school Algebra III, IV curriculum, along with professional development for educators to be beginning in August. PD will continue to be offered throughout the school year. Like with our English Language Arts, part of the district professional development hours have been set aside for educators to study and unpack the curriculum priority standards and curriculum maps in grade level teams. Newly developed curriculum maps were developed by teams of educators to align with the new curriculum and priority standards. These curriculum maps enable greater access and consistency across the system for mathematics learning. When implementing new curriculum, family communication is essential. Schools will be providing families with letters outlining the concepts taught along with the tools to support our families' understanding of these concepts. Departments of Curriculum and Instruction and Early Learning will create a crosswalk tool to align the preschool mathematics curriculum and the new K-5 math curriculum, as well as provide professional learning opportunities for preschool teachers on the alignment. This will also be completed for the new phonics curriculum and the preschool literacy curriculum. These alignment efforts will enable a more fluid transition for preschoolers as they move into kindergarten. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you.
Open for questions.
Questions or comments? Vice President Wenskill.
That's great about the special ed increases. That's very hopeful. So I have a question about curriculum mapping because I did hear a middle school teacher talk about how maybe it's going a little bit too fast for seventh graders. And so do you, are you going to look at that? Are you going to get feedback from the teachers and, you know, adjust if possible?
Yes. So the curriculum mapping was actually done by a team of teachers for each content area last spring. And again, as we do annually, we will bring together a cadre of teachers, inviting those who would choose to participate. So I really do encourage participation from educators so that we can try and make it the right fit. We sometimes work with vendors, like especially around the math curriculum. We work with vendors to get some outside feedback. And then the teachers use that and curate the feedback in order to identify the right pathway for our students in Tacoma.
Good, thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Director Cobb.
On the, I have two questions. One, the increases in the percentage of students, especially in third grade ELA and math, who are either at level three or four, were those increases that you saw coming based on eye-ready outcomes?
Yes.
Okay. And then my other question is, or more, but question slash comment. I think, well, the third grade outcomes for students who are English learners is always to me misleading because it's an English Language Arts assessment and they're still getting English Language Development Services. But I think it's interesting to look at their, as a group, their ELA outcome, that's 17.4 as opposed to their math outcome, which is 30.1. So I'd just like to point out that fact of English Language Development, English Language Arts Assessment. But that same trend doesn't hold when you get to like fifth grade outcomes. It looks like their math outcomes take, go in a different direction. So I don't have a true question about it, but I just want to, I'm just pointing it out. But I appreciate the work that you all continue to do to create coherence and alignment across the system. And I just look forward to these numbers continuing to trend upward.
I would just add that I think that, you know, with the addition of our aligned math curriculum, that we were hoping to see the grades go the opposite direction.
Director Leon.
Thanks. Thank you for your presentation. Looks like improvements in many places. And we talked about special education, the Hispanic numbers are coming up. And the Native American numbers, as you've mentioned, are the only ones that are on the negative trend. Is there, are there any work groups or special attention being paid there? I imagine there are. And what are you hopeful for, you know, relationships there with the Native American communities and families to try to improve that?
Well, I think that with the Continuous Achievement Plan, which is focused on student groups and looking at data around those student groups, and then schools with teachers and administrators, looking at ways to address those deficiencies within those student skills, I think we're going to see some changes there, at least that's what we're hoping as we focus on more individual programs for student needs within the academic areas that they're struggling with.
And part of that is engagement of the parents.
Absolutely.
Of course, right?
And it's just looking at each individual student as an individual learner.
The other comment I had is, so these are early year presentation you gave, but I've been hearing, we've heard in public comment from middle school, algebra concerns around the algebra, kind of algebra for all, I don't know if there's a name for that, but everybody taking algebra in the seventh grade is possibly being too early to be kind of forced on the majority of the kids. Many of them can handle it and will do well, but there's some kids that may need a slower attempt at learning that. I've heard this from many parents and actually many teachers. Last night, again, at the all PTA meeting, I heard it from three, two parents and two teachers, different people. So I think it's something that to be cognizant of. And the end product can be, I'll give you an example of what's happening. This in my, my daughter and her cohort, there were, there's sometimes not enough of the AP, so AP stats was not offered at stadium because there weren't enough kids to take it. And there's a lot of breakdown and less, less kids wanting to take the advanced classes. And the second level calculus class was kind of the only, the only one being given in the math department. So she's not the only one with this issue. Other kids have, and other parents that we know are in this cohort. I only know about the one school that my kids at. So this is, she's taking a different, a different math class, it's probably not as challenging. But just something to be cognizant of as the kids track down into the 12th grade and 11th grade, what classes are available to still push them and drive them if they choose not to take the super high level AP calculus. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Just one, the board has played a leadership role as the standardized test is not the only measure of success. And one of the things, even as we look at our data here, we need to be transparent about is when we look at change, we're talking about a different group of third graders from a different group of third graders. So we're also unpacking that data. And then you folks will have an opportunity in your strategic plan benchmarking process to be looking at is those the right measurements of success? And so even when we see highs and lows, we have to recognize that those are a different group of kids that come through and look at that, that indicator. So we're looking at those three-year trend datas and seeing are we overall making more kids be, or helping more kids be successful, not making, helping more kids be successful. But I'd be remiss to, to not point out those changes reflect a different group of kids. And educators, classroom teachers, every year start with a new group of kids and a new baseline. And so that growth is oftentimes described as a three-year average amongst a different group of kids. More kids in Tacoma are being successful in that trend, and that's the exciting part.
I have a couple of questions. One, you indicated with ELA, 22 of the 35 elementary schools saw gains. Can we make that information public? I would be interested to see which schools and which gains, how big were the gains?
So that's available on the school's website. It'll be updated through the benchmarking process. So each school has the priority benchmarks labeled right on their websites. And you can see how your school's doing, as well as click on any school.
So can we aggregate that for a quick snapshot of the 35? So I don't have to click through 35 and the public doesn't have to click through 35? Because I noted also 25 of the 35 elementary schools saw an increase in math. And again, to be able to understand who and where. And I continue, you know, it's the testing culture that we are in statewide and nationally. But this measurement of this year's third graders to last year's third graders drives me nuts. I'm a cohort growth person, and I'm hoping as we get the data warehouse fully on board that we'll be able to track kids over time and look at longitudinally how are they doing? Because we would want to see them continuing to grow and make progress rather than trying to determine why this year's third graders did better or worse than last year's third graders. I just don't, I appreciate the report and your reporting on benchmarks that we have set, but I very much look forward to going through the work in the next few weeks and months with my colleagues and the superintendent and her team. Because I think we can start to lead the way on what is, what sort of grouping and measurement is truly tracking success, progress, where do we need to get better, those sorts of things. I just, this year over year is super frustrating to me. Then I will get off my soapbox. Director Cobb, did I see a hand?
No, I'll hold it.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the presentation.
Just a quick point. I just, I just wanted to make sure that it was live. So currently, you can go right on the district's website to the benchmark and slice and dice that third grade result by score, by school, and by race and by gender and English language learner. So if you're at home or in the audience and like looking at data and the different slices and the gaps, you have access to that as well. So that portion of the data warehouse is up and live.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to item number 15 on the agenda, board comments and reports. I'll start with Director Cobb.
Thank you. I think I was at, at our last business meeting, I was not here, I was at the Cube Conference. And I, this is my third, sorry. The, within the National School Boards Association, which is our national organization. There is a subgroup called the Council of Urban Boards of Education that largely represents large urban school districts across the country. So it was their annual meeting. And I always appreciate, this is my third year going, and Karen always used to like to go, so I feel like I have to go now. But I always appreciate going to hear conversations that are more central to the issues that urban school districts face within NSBA and even within Washington State. The majority of our 295 school districts are small and kind of rural. And there are 50 of us that are not. So it's interesting to hear just the differences in the organizations of school boards, the differences in community conversations about things like race and like poverty and just the different places that communities are in. I was talking to a school board member who's currently in a lawsuit against his own district because of some real rooted and real hesitance to address issues of discrimination. So it's just, it's just nice reality check. And it's a nice, a nice reality check on, like, we have real challenges here, but we are in such, from a Washington State education policy infrastructure standpoint and from a local leadership, like collective leadership in our community, at the city council, county council, school board, like we are in such a privileged position in comparison to the context for policymaking and leadership of public education in some of the other urban communities in our country. So I just think it's a great way to keep perspective because there are some real challenges kids are facing across this country. And yes, we have challenges, but we need, we need to keep it in perspective. So I'll bring that message back. And then also, it's just also neat to get introduced to different speakers that give keynote presentations and other things. I have to go back and find the name of the gentleman who gave one of the lunchtime keynote. His perspective was, he brought the perspective of, he's a grown-up now, but of a student with disabilities, whose family had some challenges too, and who also had some significant disabilities that required some specially-designed instruction that he got later. But also some really strong gifts and talents to go along with that, that weren't really tapped into until later. So the way that he presented and the way that he told his story and just the resources that he offered were, I thought, really good. So it was just a person, like when you get asked, well, who's a good speaker? He was one of those that I would. That he was one of those that I would point to. Overall, that's it for CUBE. And just comment wise, I had the opportunity from a work standpoint to participate in some conversation about identifying new measures of student poverty, especially for the, we've historically had a nice, nice-ish benefit in the fact that getting families to fill out free and reduced price meal forms to enroll them in school lunch programs served as a pretty solid, or the best measure we had available for doing research into outcomes of students who are impacted by poverty. And for accountability purposes, state systems require, rely on that measure to break out that free, reduced price lunch eligible or low income student subgroup. But because of policy changes that allow students to get access to meals more seamlessly through different processes without having the forms, that measure is not as good for accountability purposes and for research purposes. But from our standpoint, it got me thinking more and more about how we talk about poverty and how we talk about a student being low income and all those terms. And it also makes me think more and more about when we start making comparisons between students, like even in our, this benchmark report, we don't know anything about the students' family income who are just above the thresholds of eligibility. And that distribution of kids and families who are eligible is so small. It's like up to 185% of the federal poverty level, which is such a low threshold of family income. And so when we make those comparisons, we're comparing this very low end of the income distribution to everybody else and we know nothing about the family characteristics in terms of socioeconomic status and income of the kids we're comparing to. So I just raise it as something for us to think about. The more that other districts and other states move away from using the free, reduced price lunch forms as the way to get kids access to meals. And I raise it as we cheat more conversations about our strategic plans and benchmarks and how we think about student subgroups. And I raise it for us to think about potentially alternative ways of thinking about student need from that standpoint in the places where we have discretion about saying, you can have access to this resource or this benefit, whether it's a bus pass or whatever, based on some threshold of need. And is there some other way that we should be thinking about financial need that goes beyond that super duper low threshold of federal poverty level and free, reduced price lunch eligibility? When we have the discretion and when we have the resources to do it.
Thank you. Director Leon?
So I just want to clarify also one of the comments. So it's exciting to know that the TEA and the Teachers Union is in support of us studying the delayed school start time. I'm very excited about this, but I think there was a, maybe just the wrong words were used there in that we have approved something the board has not approved us going forward to formally study this yet. We still are studying it, researching it ourselves. And we're going to be doing a, a formal study session on it, a part of it, November 7th. So just so the public understands, it's, it's not formally voted on by the board. But we are, we are reading on it and on our own time. And I'm, I'm very excited about the prospect of the Teachers Union really and all the teachers coming together to support this idea of doing a formal then research into what it, how it would work for Tacoma. So this is, this is exciting. Also, the, I was at the PTA, all-city PTA last night, and there was all approval there. They don't take a vote and they don't endorse topics like this. But there was nothing but approval and lots of excitement in that room of 30-plus people around this topic. So I wanted to share that with everyone, that there is real, real interest and in what we think and research has shown is really important for kids' health, kids' academic success in, in our city. I think this is something that's, is long overdue. And we hope to be able to study it together and come to that conclusion as a team. But that's still a few weeks away for that formal, formal session. So I'm just going to go down a list of a couple of other things here. There, I want to thank also the superintendent and her support, helping get a public health speaker down at Stadium, talking about just public health regard to preventing gun injury prevention is something that's really important to our society and something I worked on for a long time before I joined the board here and still do. So we are continuing to educate folks on, on the public health aspects, not just of that. So it's a, it's a good lesson learned in addition to adding on to, you name it, vaping, texting and driving. You could, you could extrapolate any topic in here that is really important for our youth and our society to learn about at this level. And this is what we're talking about with team building and, and doing projects and learning how to deconstruct something to its basic problems and then come back and find solutions. So I'm excited to have a national leader come and talk to our kids about that. The board member interviews, we had a lot of great applicants. So I just want to say that we picked five and it's no, we're not diminishing the experience and the strong applications that were also in those other 15. So if you weren't picked, I just want to say thank you for applying. Continue to do all the good work that you, you're doing in your community and advocacy that you're doing for those other folks. Because we're only going to be able to pick one out of those five also. The, there's been several, a lot, a lot more. I'm hearing from a lot of parents and teachers about nutrition quality. And I reassure them that we've, we've got a nutritionist on staff now at the district. So I think the quality and nutrition of our lunches is going to improve. I just know that I hear a lot about nutrition quality from parents. The environmental efficiency, environment efficiency issue around how we're going to make Tacoma schools greener is real. We are thinking about this as a board. We're going to put it up to our discussion when we talk about goals in the next coming weeks. The bond is something that we are obviously going to be working towards and trying to get everybody out there to vote. And in that bond measure, we, we know there's going to be many aspects that are going to be helping the environment and helping save money for Tacoma with the guard, or Tacoma schools with a guard to making environmentally conscious and cost-conscious changes. And I'll just kind of finish up with, so I was at Stadium and Lincoln football games Friday. I went from one halftime, at halftime I drove over to the other one. And I do that sometimes when I'm worried about safety at one of the schools when someone's playing a team. That might be a lot faster and bigger than the others. So brought my residence, lots of good learning there. But I do want to bring up a topic that I think would, would benefit all of our, of our athletes is, so there are, I, I've come across this many times over the years. I've been the school volunteer physician for the, for the teams where I, we diagnose something. I diagnose something, we pull them out of the game. It's not serious enough that I need to send them to the hospital. But it's serious enough that we give the parents and give a parent something in written is what I think is going on. Please see your physician tomorrow, the next day, a few days from now. And again, it's happened again Friday to a student where significant issue and for lots of different reasons. A lot of parents can't find the time from their busy schedule. Some families are not single, are not two-parent families. There's miscommunication, there's lots of reasons, not because these parents don't care about their kids, but kids suffer. So one possible solution would be to have, consider these school-based health centers that we have currently at Oakland, you know, eventually trying to expand those to all the high schools in Tacoma to be able to have a physician or a nurse practitioner or PA available. It doesn't mean every night. Right now I'm available to all the trainers to have discussions with them about their student athletes. But that still doesn't cover a lot of the questions that come up. So I think that this is just the tip of the iceberg. A lot of kids going with undiagnosed problems that need further follow-up, even if I or someone else are able to see them on the sideline. So just something to think about there. And Stadium is going to play against Lincoln this Friday. So I'll be at that game at Lincoln if anybody wants to come and say hi. And the last thing I'll say is the garden at Whitman Elementary, the project that one of our parents has been working on for a while is, is coming to fruition. And Superintendent Santana was there last month, I believe, working and working on the garden. And I was there also and, and they've got their path in and it looks really nice. And they're working on getting their raised garden boxes in the next few months. So good job to that team.
Thank you. Vice President Winsko.
Okay, I just want to also talk about the people who applied for the board. And when we looked at the applications, we tried to find people that would maybe enhance what we're doing now and have skills that we could use. But there were many people that we could have interviewed. So I thank everybody for interviewing or sending in their application. I have a couple of things to say. First of all, I went to Mary Lyon dedication, which was very well attended. And I talked to several people who live in the neighborhood and they were so excited. It has just been such a positive thing for the neighborhood. And I think that the playground's been used for months. Everybody just loves it, so I'm really excited about that. I want to know about dyslexia and if we're going to be an early adopter of dyslexia. So there's a new law, I should say, to diagnose it for what? Kindergartners and first graders, correct?
I don't exactly know. I don't know what the parameters are. We know that, you know, we've been given this year to get ready. And I know that our, you know, that some of our special ed folks are putting, getting together. But to be honest with you, I don't know what, we, we haven't talked about early, we have not talked about early adoption, but we have talked about, you know, what are all the steps that we need to get in place to make sure that we do a better job of, I mean, that, you know, that we start to implement the law.
So I do know that they're going to some training, because I went to the special ed PTA the other, the other day and they talked about the, that they are going to go to some training to try to figure out who knows something about it. You know, it's kind of a.
Yeah, there's some things around the country.
Doing well.
Yeah, there's things around, there's some instructional strategies that have been identified around the country that seem to, number one, identify sooner, you know, that identify the criteria with students earlier and also have some strategies that we, we aren't using that might be possible.
Right. And I heard there's money for early adopters, so I just want to say that. And then the other thing I heard at the special ed PTA, they were talking about websites and some are better than others. But they especially said that the Stadium website was the best. So we should copy that one.
For, for the, the whole school website?
Yeah, the school website. They just thought it was wonderful. And these people are on other ones too, so they felt that was really good. So, okay.
That's all for me.
All right, thank you. Director Cobb?
I just wanted to make a comment about the question about the dyslexia legislation. I hope, if we are an early adopter or not, either way, as we move to being compliant with the law, because I think it centers around in part early identification and universal screening, maybe. I just hope that we don't think about it as one more thing or a separate thing. We think about it as part of the comprehensive work that we're doing in special education and as part of our comprehensive multi-tiered system of support and how we think about screening generally and not just screening for dyslexia, but how do we think about screening for academic, behavioral, social, emotional, mental health needs and a broader kind of comprehensive assessment system?
It's part of a system, yeah. Makes sense.
I'm sure that you're already thinking about it. But as we have more community conversations about being in compliance with the law, like using it as an example of how we do, how we screen for other needs that students might have for additional support more broadly and not just about the narrow topic of dyslexia, recognizing that there's a lot of work to do to improve early identification and effective intervention.
Vice President Winsko?
So if it could be done with WACs, that would be great. I don't know whether, that would really identify it though, because a lot of children do backwards numbers and letters as a regular course and it doesn't mean they're dyslexic. So, you know, it might be really hard to determine early on, but that's it.
Last Wednesday, I also was out at Mary Lyon. It was a super fun community celebration. They had the school choir up, just rocking it, which was excellent. And it's such a great resource in that neighborhood. Yesterday, I was at the Hilltop Artists Lunch. 25 years that program has been underway. It's just amazing what those participants are able to do and how well-renowned Hilltop Artists. Like it's a door opener. All over the world, people know about that program. And so it was really cool to see 25 years' worth of work and the, the life-changing impacts it's had on, on students and families. And I would like to add my appreciation to those candidates that applied. 15 people in our community took the time to fill out the application and considered serving. And, you know, I appreciated some comments made in the TNT last week that if they were going to give out awards for valor, school board members should be towards the front. And I appreciate that. I often recall when I was working for Congressman Smith on education issues and we would travel the district to visit schools, he would say, I don't know why anybody would ever want to serve on a school board. So thank you to the people that, that put their applications in to be considered. Always challenging trying to then pare that down to a workable list of candidates to be interviewed. I think the five that have been selected have qualifications that would add value to the board. And certainly there were people that we didn't select that equally could have provided value to the board. So again, thankful for their willingness to be considered. Item number 16, announcement of future board meetings. Next Thursday, Eat Your Wheaties. We have a lot of stuff that we're going to cover. So we'll start in here at four o'clock for the candidate interviews. We'll be down on the floor in the setup like we have typically for our study sessions. And we've allotted two hours for those interviews to take place. And then we will roll into a study session at 6:00 PM, three topics, strategic plan goals. So we'll get the, the first look at where we are with our strategic plan. And we'll be able to have conversation around, are there additional goals that we would be interested in adding to the strategic plan? I know we've talked about some sort of administrative or something that captures those sorts of operational components of the district. The second item will be a bond resolution preview. So we'll have a last chance to ask deep questions about what's being considered in the bond, what we think we're going to get for that investment. And then the third piece is our legislative agenda. So we'll have an opportunity, I believe Charlie Brown, our government affairs consultant, will be here and we'll talk about the legislative agenda. And then on Wednesday, October 23rd, we'll have a 6:00 PM Committee of the Whole meeting. That will be our first conversation around budgeting, policy and strategy. So that was one of the three priorities that the board identified at our summer retreat. And we'll have some preliminary conversations around what sort of budget parameters, how are we going to be more involved or differently involved? And really a conversation with us and the superintendent, the deputy superintendent. We'll come back on Thursday, October 24th, and that's going to be another full business meeting. We'll be voting on the legislative agenda at that meeting. We'll be voting on a candidate for appointment to fill the vacant school board seat. So that will be an important meeting. And then it's not yet reflected on the schedule, but because there's been a lot of conversation around bell schedule and some of those other issues, November 7th is our Committee of the Whole. And that will be the priority that the board identified as the top priority for the year, student, health and safety for student and staff. And that will include bell schedule, that will include nutrition, that will include mental health. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that today is World Mental Health Day. There's a lot of mental health issues that students are dealing with. They're impacted by family members that are dealing with issues. We have staff that are dealing with issues. So when we start to unpack that at that November 7th Committee of the Whole, there's a lot of really important conversation to have. And I look forward to the conversation. I think to calibrate expectation, none of these issues are going to be solved immediately. They're going to require really thoughtful conversation. I know if I, as I've started to look at data on the bell schedule, and I have long been interested in exploring that, there's some pretty compelling data on the physical health side of things. And there's mixed data on the academic side of things. And so we're going to have to have some conversations around what are the outcomes we're trying to achieve. And I'm excited to have those conversations, just as we're going to have to identify what are the sort of health outcomes that we want for students and staff? What are the safety outcomes that we want for students and staff? And we have moved up. We originally were going to swear in that new board member on November 14th. And we have moved up to November 7th. We're going to have a special business meeting prior to that Committee of the Whole so that that appointed person will be in their official capacity when we start to have these important conversations. So that there will be five of us that are able to engage and really. conversations so that there will be five of us that are able to engage and really start to dig in and figure out the outcomes that we're trying to achieve. So I'm excited. I think we're going to, we've got a lot of really important conversations to have and I'm excited to also be inviting members of the community in so that we can hear a variety of perspectives of how does this impact, what sort of a difference do they think it'll make? The teachers supporting the, the study I think is encouraging because I've long said, I look to the teachers first and foremost if we're going to improve academic outcomes to tell us what they think as our educational professionals, what those sorts of things are. So I'm really interested in hearing their perspective. Transportation, I don't know how we are going to be able to figure the transportation side out, so that's going to take some thoughtful conversation as well. If we have high school, they're starting at 8:30 and we have elementary school, they're starting at nine o'clock. I'm confident that we can get there, but I just want the community to have a calibrated expectation that we're going to have to be very intentional in this process. It's not going to be a, have a meeting on November 7th and November 8th. We, we make a decision. So please be patient with us, please continue to provide your comments. It's very helpful, I know, for all of us as we're weighing these really challenging, important decisions. And with that, is there anything else for the good of the order? Superintendent Santorini?
I wanted, Dr. Garcia, look, we have not hired the nutritionist yet, the position has been posted, so the interviews haven't yet.
So if you're interested, please submit your application. You can go onto the public website under careers, under administrative positions and click right in and we're always looking for high-quality, whole educators to join our staff. How'd I do, team HR? All right.
Thumbs up.
That's a commercial.
Anything else for the good of the order? With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.